To all of the Special Ed., Alternative Ed. and Early Childhood Subcommittee. Can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Draghi.
Here.
Mr. Corey.
Here.
Ms. Pereira.
Here.
Please salute to the flag behind us.
By allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Do we have any citizen input time for this meeting?
We do not.
No citizen input time. We're going to move right on to item 301, Discussion and Vote to Refer Related Service Staffing. Madam Superintendent.
So, it, over the course of this year and due to a few different, few different things, one being student need, one being our contract for related service providers, we do have, we see an increase in need and the need to increase staff related to that. So, it's a combination of enrollment and the level of need of students as well as compensatory services because at times when we have been understaffed, students are not receiving services. And we're looking at the addition of a number of staff. I'm looking for the totals here. They are there? Okay. Okay. So, the need is for one additional speech-language pathologist, five SLPAs, two occupational therapists, and three CODs.
Any questions? You there, members? Well, I'll go just briefly. So, I think in summary, is there a dollar figure related to the request as long, as well as where the money's going to come from in the budget?
We talked today about it looking to be about $500,000 in staffing that needed to be added. And I, in terms of, do we have the money? Yes, we do. We do have the money that we can put out this year, looking, moving forward and depending on what the budget looks like for next year, we may have to make some decisions around staffing in other areas to accommodate the $500,000 increase here.
I would say that for the full committee, if this gets referred, we need real information.
Sure.
And I'm just looking at this quickly, but the, is there any other reasons why this is coming up now, other than, I see the increase of enrollments, the needs, the contractual constraints is something that I was always opposed to, but I guess that's, you know, coming up here. But if you could just talk us through, like, what does that look like? And any other reasons why this is now coming up when we had a budget approved six months ago?
So, related services has always been an area that's been a priority as far as trying to really get a handle on the structures that currently exist. At the end of last year, I asked one of my supervisors to work collaboratively with our lead OT and lead SLP to really figure out what are the needs of our current services and then projecting what are we going to need for this upcoming budget season. During that time, we had a couple of things happen that were not predicted. One was 194 new special education students, 79 of which are in a substantially separate program in our district. So, we know with those high needs, all of those students are going to require additional related services. We were already very tight as far as staffing goes and meeting the needs of students. So, just that alone would make the need for more positions. Not to mention the other students in the inclusion program, not to say that they don't have a need for related service, some of them do. But the other piece along with that was while this is all going on last year, we had changes to the contract language. What we were negotiating was, we know that our high-needs classrooms, our ASD classrooms, our medically fragile classrooms, our early childhood classrooms, they require intensive services. Very different services than, say, a high school student might have, who still requires speech or OT, but it's a different level of service. So, there's this conversation about workload versus caseload. The existing contract language is already based upon caseload. We, through the committee's support, we actually got a Walker report that is going to help us tease out a little bit of the caseload versus workload. But right now, the contract language exists that it is caseloads. Having said that, the negotiating team agreed to lower the caseload caps for those high-needs areas. Our programs are called PREP, RISE, and then early childhood. It decreased the cap of those providers by 10 students per provider. It impacted about 10 providers. So, overall, that's the difference of like 100 students receiving services. Hence, the need between the new enrollment and the additional cap language. And the needs, the high needs, the reason, Mr. Aggie, I fear your question, is why I'm bringing this up now, and it can't wait till our FY '27 budget is approved. I'm not saying we don't need more than that. I'm saying in order to meet the needs of our students, and we have 209 students on a speech compensatory list, we have 127 students on an OT compensatory list. Some of this is carryover from last year when we had vacancies, and again, those students, you know, add to additional services needed. Having said that, just for the benefit of the public, when a speech and language pathologist is supervising an assistant, there is regulations around their licensure, they can only supervise three assistants. So, for every three assistants, we need to make sure that we have an SLP who has the license to be able to supervise. So, that's why some of the, they go hand in hand.
My question is on the numbers of the SLPAs. If we gave five more, that'll total 34, but there's 21 SLPs. So, if the assistants can work and service children and the, with a person supervising them by three, if we have 21 SLPs, the numbers aren't making sense to say.
Right.
Not all of them are able to sort of, or are they just not, are we choosing not to have more because we need even more SLPAs?
We have six SLPs that have not met the licensure requirement to be able to supervise an SLPA. So, what happens with an SLP when you're in your final year after you complete your coursework? You're considered a clinical fellow. A clinical fellow has to work under a SLP that has their CCs, which is their licensure. The first, the first year, they work under the supervision of the SLP. The second year, they're considered an SLP, but they still can't supervise an SLPA. So, there's two years. We have six people somewhere in those two-year cycles. So, I can tell you at the end of this year, two of them will be able to supervise because they're in that second year.
Yeah, I understand. So, I, I'm just going to predict something based on these numbers that we currently have, and we need more SLPAs than the five that you're asking for. So, if I'm looking at 21, less six is 15. If they can all supervise three, 15 times three is 45. So, we can have up to 45 SLPAs supervised by our own people, and we're only going to have 34 because this here is the.
And I will be transparent with the committee, we do have three open SLP positions. So, even if I could fill more SLPA positions, I can't supervise them yet until I get SLPs.
So, you could be up to 36 under your numbers.
So, I'd be up to 36 SLPs, I mean, SLPAs?
That could be serviced if you had 12. So, if you have 21 SLPs minus six and three vacancies, that takes you down to 12. 12 times three is 36. So, you could service with the current population of SLPs up to 36 SLPAs, based on what you're saying.
If it was always that clear, so I'll give you, yes, but here's another example, right, of a, some of our current positions are filled by agencies. Well, the agency has someone who can work a .8 position, so.
Can they supervise?
They can supervise, but again, they're here one less day a week. So, like, what does that do for the actual?
My only point is I'm supportive of this. It's needed. The data's here. You don't present things to us that don't make sense. The data's here. Whoever did the work for you did the work. You can clear his day. It's not a complicated formula. But with that being said, I think we need more support.
Right. And at the end, I do agree.
And that means if you fill up all these positions in the next, if the committee goes with it, and then you fill them all, please come back to us ASAP with any additional because we definitely are going to need more support than what's here. These numbers are staggering. And through the other piece of the Walker report, we've got to figure out why and how. This is just, I had some notes on grades coming in, like, that's a whole other discussion, but we have way too many students qualifying.
We have 2,000 students, almost now 2,000 students who receive speech and language services in our district, and we have about 1,000 students out of 3,200 special education students. So, the numbers are.
So, 2/3 get speech services of every, and what is the industry standard on that typically?
There really isn't anything specific from the industry, but if the state, like, overall special ed numbers is around 20%, we wouldn't want to go over that. So.
Let me see, we, so we are currently, how many, we have 25% of our kids have special, have an IEP here?
It's 62% of our special education students are eligible for speech, and 31% of our special education students are eligible for OT.
But how many of our overall students are eligible for an IEP?
Oh, 3,200, and we're at what? Yeah, it's about 30%. We're high, or 27%.
Yeah.
27%.
So, it begs the question of doing something different, which I think is, the Walker report's going to help us with that. So, with that, I am going to be supportive. Mr. Corey.
So, Ms. Obin-Chain, it begs me to ask the question about recruiting the SLPs and the SL, you know, the, what's that whole picture looking like out there? We're already using the temp agency. All right, is anybody in the temp agency willing to cross over and become full-time employees for us?
We have not explored that with many of the temp agencies that we utilize for related services because there's a buyout piece, which, again, we've done that with Mr. Almeida, he's not here, is he? We've done that with Mr. Almeida in the past, and it's not cost-effective at that point. But I honestly haven't looked at it because we are looking to do that with the teachers and the parents from the agency, and that's kind of where I started.
So, are we going to find, how are we going to recruit this extra personnel that you need?
We're going to keep doing what we're doing, right? Like, we have tons of, we've always put our feelers out there. I have a great team that knows a lot of people in the surrounding area. We try to get them that way. We try to have, I have, our HR department, what do you call it, update school spring, like, refresh our postings every two weeks just to try to get new candidates. We do have some schools that, again, that send us the CFs and those pieces.
What schools in the area offer those programs?
I want to say Simmons is a big one for us. Honestly, I'd have to go back and look. I don't know off the top of my head.
Yeah. So, maybe we can really.
Leslie maybe has one.
If we can energize the recruitment at those kind of places, you try to get somebody in their senior-level classes ready to move into a career to, you know.
Yeah.
Thanks, Ayeel.
Ms. Pereira.
The only question I had was regarding recruitment, which was kind of answered because what I'm, what I'm understanding, if I'm correct, is that regardless of how many SLPAs we want to give you, we do not have enough SLPs to supervise. So, right now, you're basically saying, this is the maximum that we are allowed to have. Is that, is that accurate?
Yeah. Three. Is that what you're asking about, the limit of three?
Three each. But you're saying that we have 20, what is it, 29?
I base my request, honestly, is the amount of service needs I need to do from now projected till the end of the year, based on what we've been asking.
So, with that being said, how many SLPAs could be, could we have right now and have supervisors for them? So, if it's one for three.
Go ahead. Ooh. Oh, oh, I forgot we had microphones as we did.
So, how many, I can, what I can tell you with some assurance, right, is that with the new positions, both SLPs, SLPAs, everybody has supervision now. If I said, if I went up to seven, I'd have to go back and look and see how many, not all of our SLPs.
Like you're saying are here. So, even though you're saying six aren't, aren't able to supervise, there's actually more than six who are not able to supervise at full capacity because they're not here enough. Or not here at the correct times, or, no.
Well, not necessarily, but there's also SLP, so the way the contract language is written is something, and again, I don't have it directly in front of me, but if I only service, if I only supervise two SLPAs right now, I can see a caseload of kids. If I was to give that SLP another SLPA, that means more kids that need to be serviced by an SLPA. It is, it's not as black and white as I'm, I want it to be so that I can be totally transparent. I'm trying to be as transparent based on, like, we look at this over and over.
So, the law's saying one person can supervise three, but you're saying, well, if they do, then they're not going to do a lot of the other important work they need to do, and we're just tipping it out.
Yeah. In addition to what the regulation is, we have contract language.
Sure.
So, like, for example, the two SLPs that serve on the early childhood evaluation teams.
Yes.
In order for them to complete the number of evaluations per month they complete, they can't supervise more than one SLPA. If we give them more than one, I have to pull back on how many evaluations they can complete, which then means now I need to.
So, we can't just do those numbers like, okay.
It's not as black and white as.
So, related to that, thank you. Related to that, I was against the caseload caps. In the infinite wisdom of the school committee and the administration, they chose to go with it. These caseload caps, I said it at the time, and I'll say it again, are creating a problem for us where now we're trying to figure out contract language and the like. It ties the hands of the administration, whether it's in SED or in another department. We should never have agreed to it, but the infinite wisdom of those in power said that that's what they wanted to do. The issue of recruiting, I think, one of the suggestions I've made it, I made it at the budget, I made it last year. In 2018, it was said that in the HR audit report that we actually did, that we need an HR recruiter. Hello, but then we have a director of HR that doesn't want it. And I tried to give him the position, oh, no, I don't need it. And I don't know if anybody saw the Collins Center report, but you should probably take his words, figure out what's in the Collins Center report, and say, I guess there's a problem here. Because everyone told me, including him and superintendent and everybody, we've got a high-functioning HR department. Let's put them in for a raise. Everything's going great. And now we've got a mess on our hands because we can't recruit properly. We don't recruit properly. We can sugarcoat it all we want. Our HR department is a mess, and it has a problem. So, you're going to have a hard time doing it because we don't have a recruiter, and that's the problem. We have so many vacancies, but we're not doing everything we can do in HR. You're the SED director, you can only do so much. We need to look at the HR department to try to help to my colleague's point. Where are we going to get these people from? We need to do a better job recruiting, and we need to put the people in place that can actually do it. We obviously don't have that. With that, I think it's, the data's showing it, it's very clear, so.
We need to motion to refer.
Motion made to refer, seconded. Roll call, please.
Ms. Draghi.
Yes.
Mr. Corey.
Yes.
Ms. Pereira.
Yes.
Next up is the Walker report. Is this just a simple, just a little?
Yeah, I'm just going to do, just a brief overview. I just want to take this opportunity to kind of tell you where we are with the Walker report. So, just for the public's knowledge, we, with the support of the committee, we asked the Walker Educational Services Group to complete a program evaluation, which is required, we're required to do periodically for DESI. So, I asked the committee to support a program review of our related services because, again, the numbers are astonishing, and I can ask for as many positions as I want, but I want to meet the needs of kids in the best way possible. So, we were able to get that Walker report completed. The four areas they looked at, and I'm just going to provide a brief summary because this will be an ongoing work in progress over the course of the year. We had them look at our MTS systems of support, so what happens before students need a related service. Eligibility and identification, because our numbers are high, service delivery models, and just overall systems and workflows. So, summarizing each of those areas. MTSS in Fall River is a work in progress. It's not just specifically related to the area of related services, but academic, SEL, MTSS is a priority for us, and with the Office of Instruction collaborating with myself and Dr. Braunhard, we're trying to bring some systems and structures in place to have things more consistent. What that means with related services, because of having to prioritize these four different areas, MTSS for related services is a longer-term goal for me because the urgency is on service delivery and eligibility first. But MTSS in relation, what we can do is look at what resources are available for classroom teachers to support students who may present with some, some weaknesses prior to making a referral for special education. Because we, out of all of the students, the, I think we had 500 referrals for special education last year that involved related services. 40% of them were found not eligible for related services. Therefore, we are spending a lot of time referring kids who weren't getting picked up anyway. And evaluations are time-consuming, and those are, again, time where we could be servicing kids. So, for strengthening Tier 1, we hope some of those findings, again, would be reduced. The second piece was the eligibility, like I mentioned before. You know, we have a 25, 26% eligibility rate overall in special education in Fall River. However, the, the eligibility rate for related services is even higher than that. Like I mentioned, 62% for speech and 31% for OT. What we uncovered with this is that although eligibility is a team decision, we need to have some consistent guidelines because we have multiple people doing the evaluation. So, depending on who's evaluating, what school you're at, so we need some consistent guidelines. The guidelines most recently used by our staff are from 2013. In fact, I didn't even know they existed, and I've been here for four years. So, we need to go back and work on those. The third piece is service delivery. We need to diversify our service delivery. Right now, 94 to 100% of our current service providers say they do pull-out-only services. And most of those services are done one-on-one or in small group. So, again, we have a great need in Fall River. We need to think about service delivery diversification because not everybody, we're not a one-stop shop, right? We need to individualize things for kids. So, service delivery is another piece for me. And the last piece is what I've been doing, I feel like, since I got here four years ago, is developing systems and structures that bring clarity, consistency, and effectiveness to our special education department. So, we need to look at systems for, what is a caseload cap in relation to a workload? How do those things overlap? Monitoring our caseloads. What are our procedures for evaluations? Right now, there is no standardized kind of toolkit. It's at the discretion of the evaluator. Inventorying supplies, again, tracking referral data, all those kind of systems and structures that strengthen any department, especially a department as large as special education. So, next steps, I'm actually having the Walker team come down and present the findings to my entire department meeting, which involves our team chairs, our psychologists, our related service providers, because they're the ones around the table oftentimes doing this work. Then, from there, I'm going to ask for volunteers to participate in a task force or a focus group with me. So, we're going to kind of develop an action plan for each of the areas that I've just told you we will prioritize. So, I envision it coming back to this subcommittee and then full committee to kind of share what our plan is and the impact on the budget for FY '27.
Any questions?
No.
All right, thank you. Sorry, Mr. Corey.
I couldn't hear you.
Sorry.
When it comes to eligibility determination, what roles currently are the school teachers and the adjustment councils having that?
So, this is strictly for related services, but overall, if we're doing eligibility, the teachers are obviously a very active role. They are required team member around an eligibility meeting. So, they are giving us input in the evaluation itself by completing kind of where the student is at and what supports they require in the classroom. If the student has an emotional impairment or is seeing a SAC for some reason, they are around that table, too, providing some context of, you know, the needs of the student, the accommodations that support them, all of those pieces. So, if they are there during an eligibility meeting, they are an active team member, participating along with, you know, the other team.
They could refer to a site to do some assessments and try to gather some data?
So, we try to, yep, so what we try to do is we try to utilize our MTSS process, which means that if a school has a concern, either a social-emotional concern, an academic concern with a student, the teacher who has the concern, or a service provider who has that concern, should meet with the school-based student support team, the MTS team, kind of start documenting, because not every single student who's referred for special ed becomes eligible. So, we want to make sure, the law is, we have to exhaust all of those options first before we make the referral. So, yes, so then, if the MTSS team felt like the, the school has exhausted all the tools in their toolbox, and they want, the student was not showing progress, then we would want to make that referral, and that would come through from the school themselves, the referral to my team, including the psychologist who do the evaluation.
Thank you.
Okay, next item. Update on early childhood plan.
So, there is a one-page summary of current status and what potential is moving forward for pre-K programming. We currently have 18 classrooms operating out of the Early Learning Center at Bishop Connley, another five classrooms at the Fall River Learning Center, and 10 classrooms operating out of four different elementary schools, Sylvia, Spencer, Ward, and Doran and Green. Currently, we're, we have an enrollment of 471 students with a capacity of 631, so we do have 160 openings in existing classrooms. The plan for next year is to maintain the current 33 classrooms with all classrooms operating out of the Early Learning Center, which would necessitate the transfer of existing classroom staff from the ELC, teachers, parents, BCBA, and, and actually also, you know, that's coming out of all of our, the four schools, as well as the Fall River Learning Center. In, in doing that for next year, we, there are some anticipated needs in terms of resources that include, you know, people power as well as materials, full-time second-shift custodian because at capacity, we will have over 600 students in, in the school, a full-time nurse, an SEL liaison or behavior therapist that would work with the BCBA that is transferring over. Furniture in the form of student and classroom storage because the rooms at, at Connley don't actually have closets and storage built in, as well as tables and chairs for those classrooms. Outdoor recess equipment for four- and five-year-olds. We don't really have a concern about the indoor recess space because we do have full use of the gymnasium there, and that takes place now. We'd look to fence in the circular space out back for outdoor recess for the four-year-olds, and we'll need to revise schedules for tiered arrival and dismissal so that the buses aren't all arriving and leaving at the same time.
Mr. Corey.
So, on the anticipated needs list, Madam Superintendent, is there a priority to that? I mean, I see outdoor recess equipment as important for a four- or five-year-old, especially for developmental purposes, but is it a priority over some of the other items?
I would say that the classroom needs would come first in terms, you know, I had asked the question around the, the need for the tables and chairs since we are coming out of classrooms, and that was a question, you know, on my part, like, why aren't we just bringing the furniture? The furniture that's in the classrooms, especially in the 10 classrooms that are in standard classrooms that, you know, would have been, say, kindergarten classrooms in schools, it's much bulkier furniture that, you know, isn't really fit for the classroom space at Connley. So, we would need, you know, we would certainly need that kind of thing first. And I think Mr. Pacheco could speak to the need for the, the second-shift custodian, but I think that would, that would run parallel with, you know, a school of similar size. And so, it seems like that would be, that would be a necessary piece there. Full-time nurse, you know, of course. I think the idea would be, we, I don't know, the, I do think the recess equipment across our schools is important, and we've recognized the need to do some upgrades in some places, and I think this would be, this, this would just be no different.
So, as far as the Early Learning Center at the Derby site is, where would, where would they do recess? Where's the space for that? would they do recess, where's the space for that, Kristen?
What do you mean, the Derby?
Connolly, I think.
At Connolly?
It's going to be at Connolly, but, but what about the Pace, Pace Center?
We haven't, this, this plan doesn't involve that conversation yet.
Okay.
So this is only moving everyone to the Connolly site.
If we move everybody to the Connolly site, what does that render the Pace Center site?
Future discussion.
Future discussion.
Right now, the lease at Connolly is through the end of the summer of 2027, so we do have to continue the conversation, this is the plan for next year.
There's a lot of intersecting pieces going on right now, huh?
Yeah.
Well, that's good, I mean, at the Connolly site, there's plenty of space, we could even build another building on that site, if you ever need it in the future, if you're still around, you know?
Anything else?
I have a question, going back to the, the desks that the students, so we have pre-K students currently using desks right now, what are we going to do with those desks? They're not good enough to-
The size, the size of the classroom is, is what's the determining factor to taking it with us. So the classrooms that, that are at most of our schools are kindergarten classrooms, which are much larger than the pre-K size.
Are these individual desks or group desks, and mostly group desks in kindergarten?
Tables.
So we're saying desk, it's-
Essentially, it could be a larger, so it could remain in the classroom that it's in and accommodate-
And accommodate, that's what I want to make sure, that we're not, it's not going to sit in some storage facility somewhere, okay, so those tables and chairs are going to be used in the classrooms therein, we're talking about like, tables, that you, that you see in a preschool, correct? Okay, we're not, when you say desks, I think some people are probably thinking individual desks, okay. All right, that's all, thank you. Want to make sure we're not wasting money.
Thank you, I think the, it's a step process, as I mentioned, so there's going to be decisions that have to be made by different committees, or whether, probably not this committee, but some other committees, where we're going with the rest of the redistricting. Like I said, my opinion is, that should be all done by the end of the calendar year. So one of my requests is that the superintendent send us a list of the redistricting committee, the members of the committee, along with the dates that they've been meeting, and making sure that we have a representative group, so I'm assuming that it's representative of special education, different types of whatever, you know, all the different groups are part of it, but just so we can sort of move that process, I think this makes the most sense right now. Mr. Pacheco can do whatever he's got to do with getting some of this material, if you recall, we spent $200,000, $300,000 when we opened Connolly, so we have to anticipate that we're going to have other expenses-
Yeah.
-for furniture, for repairs, for the fence, for, all of these things are going to be needed, because it's 600 students, especially the littles need, make sure they have the best of everything, we're going to do it the right way. It's not going to be done on the cheap, but once you consolidate all of these staff members, I think, to Mr. Corey's point, they, they're needed plus, because you're going to have 600 kids in one school. So I know we talked about our principal in the past, like, what, did we need it, because we had the thing, we said yes. Now we add another 200 kids, so we have 600 students in that one building with pre-K students, you're probably going to need an administrator, or a hybrid of something. You, you need other people, because you're going to have 600 kids at that place, it's a lot of moving parts, so I would say, I like this plan, I think we need to go with it, but don't be shy with coming back to us when we say we need more resources, because if we're going to do it, you need to do it right, and that's what I would hope for. So I do appreciate the, the information. I would say that it's not on the agenda for a vote, but I think we should forward this to the full committee in a couple of weeks to get a vote to say, to combine, because that's going to ultimately give direction to the superintendent on where we're heading.
Sure, motion to refer to full committee?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose or voted. Thank you very much, any other questions? Any new business to come before us? No new business, motion to adjourn, can I have a motion?
Second.
Motion's made, second by Mr. Corey, roll call.
Ms. Aggie?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Hooray.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Thank you all, have a good night.
Sounds like tonight's meeting was-